Six thirty-five, we'll start the June eighth, twenty twenty-two Westminster Select Board meeting. Any adjustments to the agenda at this time? I'd like to add an E under new business lineup credit closure. Anybody else have anything? Moving on. Acceptance of Minutes, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Almost agree, just a minute.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Still opposed? I just have it. You need me to sort one?
Oh, yeah.
Unfinished business, conflict of interest policy, adjustments and accept if any.
Skip four.
What's that?
I think you skipped four.
I did, you're, nope, you're right, I did, sorry, sorry. Communications and public comment. Did you have any?
No.
Okay.
Didn't know if anyone else might though.
Okay, I'm, I was wrong.
No.
No, not here. So we're good?
Yeah.
All right, conflict of interest policy, adjustments if any and accept.
Brief comment. Mr. Chair, this has been sent out to a lengthy group of citizens and members that are also here regarding their input, and I think we should give that additional more time. Two current proposals are on there to add to this specific. One that hasn't been signed since two thousand and ten. First is that it should extend to not just a select board, but all members. Again, these are proposals and an opinion, it's not definitive, who may present a conflict of interest, and it should also include the contract, the construct of duress in the process of, and hostile work environment. That inside this, it's lacking the use of duress in any of its forms to somehow impede, impose, move someone into a position that they're not comfortable with by anything other than, you know, reasonable and accessible and good practices mannered by which we talk to one another should be placed in there. And until we get the language right, Mr. Chair, I think we should continue to let the feedback come back in. So I'd like to table it further, since it's gone out to about twenty-eight citizens.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? Under, the only one I've read the whole thing is two, under Article six, under two, says, "We've never done that, but shall not sit with the board." In other words, if there's conflict of interest according to this one, we have to get up and walk away, you can't sit with it. We've never done that. With somebody, you know, where you just basically sit there and don't say nothing, recluse yourself. I don't think we physically have to get up and move, but that's basically what it says.
Okay, a reminder on that, that this was signed by everybody on the select board, agreeing to that particular notion that if there is a conflict that is overt, you get up and you leave, so the rest of the people can't make the decision without that in there. But certainly take that under consideration, but it was signed in its original form.
I signed for it.
Yeah, no, I get it.
It was a boilerplate form, we weren't all living.
Okay. So what I want to share. So we will table that until the next meeting. More information. Any other discussion on that at this time?
I would say that if that's not going to be straight, then can't just say we've never done it.
What?
You mean why? What we're just discussing.
Not.
Article six.
Right, in the past, we have never gotten up and not sitting. We basically recluse yourself, that's what I'm saying.
The points been made.
I saw, I realized that, yes, it was there.
Well, unless it's going, my point is unless that's going to be stricken completely or new rewrite, can't just say we've never done that.
Well, it either need to be changed or followed, that's one of the others.
That's why I'm bringing it up into this discussion.
Yep, just throw in two cents, it's probably worth that, but. I was in a session quite a number of years ago, a former Secretary of State, one of the cities and towns training sessions, was asked that question. And the answer was to not sit, to leave there, but in her opinion, first in the time, she thought it was best to sit and leave the room. That sitting there, eyeballing people is a form of participation, in her opinion. And that language probably came from the draft.
Thank you. It also goes directly to indirect or direct duress, even without intent, because of the presence of somebody who clearly has a conflict. So thank you for bringing it up, it's very important. But again, we're discussing these things, it's a democracy.
Do we belong to the LCT?
Yeah.
As a town? So I was just looking through the LCT's paperwork today, and they give, as Craig indicated, like a boilerplate type conflict of interest, which was very similar to what I think you had to begin with.
Oh, we got it, huh?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I was just thinking that that might be, take the two and just see what's, what would be the best to go with. As I look through the towns, a good share of the towns, probably the majority, are using that BLCT for boilerplate conflict of interest. Just thinking it might be something to go back and forth with. Like you.
Yep. Any other discussion on conflict of interest at this time? Oh, so we'll table that and take that suggestion under advisement. Be cemetery wall, pursue or hold off? We've talked about it a couple of different times, nothing real heavy yet. I do, I went and got some prices on some block. Chuck talked to a mason about fixing what's there. Chris is a cemetery man, so.
Well, I just was here, I watched the last meeting. If you guys could just get more comfortable chairs, I'd come out, it's nice and cool in here.
You can do that.
We'll do that.
The platters, right, repliners would be great. But anyways, yeah, I'd be willing to, I know Paul had indicated possibly that it would make sense for me to, you know, present it to the ARPA committee. And I'd be happy to take what you guys have and maybe even pursue it a little bit more. I kind of would like, I feel like I would like to at least give people an opportunity to have their input on whether we repair
Hundred percent.
the stone wall as opposed to putting in a concrete wall.
And I have two samples of the concrete.
Yep.
That, I guess my thought was maybe the next meeting, if that wasn't too soon, we could start the meeting there.
Sure.
With like a public forum, like a loose public forum, get, get the word out as best you can.
Yes.
I'm not wedded to any of it, but if, you know, somebody wanted, if people felt real strongly about stone, then I'm cool with that, too. I'm, I'm fine either way.
Right, I think that wall has held up fairly well for a few years. But again, maybe, maybe people are thinking concrete because it might be quicker, simpler, less time.
Sure.
But I'd be willing to work on that, if that's something I want to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did reach out to a company out of Woodstock, they did this comeback. I was going to give Chuck contact, that way we can have, and they would come down and take a look at it. They just did all the towns up in Woodstock, they, they, that's all they do is phone walls.
And what I was thinking too was maybe, and I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I would bring this to everybody so that they would understand, like, are we looking to simply hire a contractor to do the entire job? Or was there going to be part of it done by the town? I guess I'll, I'll get that all together and have it for next meeting. I just saw the meeting a couple of days ago, so I'll have that all together by next time.
Is that enough time to do public forum?
Is that enough time to be able to have the information available to start the meeting there? Or, or do you not think that's necessary?
I can, I can, yeah, I'm getting it in good, yeah. I'll have it ready for, oh, you're two weeks, right, you're not a month.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah. Twenty seconds.
It's up to you, I don't want to push it.
I'll see what I can do. I'll come up, I'll come up with something and tell you. Yeah, I'll let them know for the, again, if I need another couple of stuff.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll try to get things together.
Kelly has a brochure. Kelly has the brochure that went with these, so it does have at least a visual, but I have two, two blocks, so if somebody wanted to look at them. So we can ta, we'll table this until the next meeting, unless you need more.
Okay, I'll do my best to have it.
Any other discussion on cemetery wall? All right, moving on, see employee raises, open discussion, negative session if necessary. You're good on your end?
I think, yeah, I think we're all set, we discussed it, I budgeted for it, and.
I think, I think your end is good.
I think we're good.
Yep. Pauline, did you have anything on your end?
Sorry about that. No, I think I, I, I sent you folks what I had from the state for municipal wages. And, well, you know, in my office, we're a little low, but not too far off. So with what's proposed by the budget that was voted on, I think we'll be in good shape.
Okay.
So the only other one, be the listers, probably be contacted, just make sure they're okay?
I don't know that. Do you know if the listers have been?
The listers, they were busy doing this question, while they were trying to do. It says right, they're, they're right across the board with what was voted on for the budget. Cost of living at five percent voted on at town meeting at the budget.
Okay.
They were busy closing out, doing grievances and closing out the grant list last week. And rental is still at, that nature field that you're.
So I think we're all right on that right now, I think.
Something changes, we go to the three main department, as long as they have it, as long as they're they're satisfied, we're all satisfied then.
So we voted on it on the budget, and they get what they're agreed on first of July?
Correct, yes.
Yep.
Anything else on employee raises? All right, moving on, new business, highway garage discussion. Anybody want to floor?
So we discussed the town meeting, but we found out there that we have to have a special meeting to move forward. So that's where we're at. We're here to beg that we have a special town meeting so that we can move forward and figure out what the town wants. Whether they decide we want a town, a new town garage, or we're going to try to fix what we got, or what we're going to do. But we need to, there's opportunities out there right now, there's metal buildings being taken down close by here that we couldn't be able to purchase for a fraction of the cost, but we don't even know what direction we're really going in. These guys are all on the committee, they're all professionals in the field. And they've worked at the building, and they've expressed their opinion to me that we shouldn't be fixing what we got. They just told them, well, buy it out, create a new one, and it just doesn't make sense. But I'm not here to speak for them if there's something to say, or if I said something wrong.
I don't, I don't know if everybody here knows the condition of what we have. I mean, I do.
We do have an open house.
I don't mean, I mean, other board members. If you want to speak to the condition of what's going on there and what you think cost-wise, you know, I don't know.
So we did invite a group of people who have, as Chuck said, we assembled. And so we have Gymcom toys who can help with discussions about compliance issues. We have a person that's a professional in the field in excavating, can talk about the cycle. We have an engineer sitting here, we can talk about the plans and the development. And we have a HVAC plumbing license person here to speak as well. One we're missing is the electrician, he's a figure. We're hoping he can make it. So he, his, what he has told us is it's a money pit as far as it goes electrically. And to keep putting money into the electrical systems, just band-aid fixes, whatever band-aid fixes is already been done to keep the building going. There's a lot of issues that, you know, we could probably take a majority of this meeting up, and you did ask us to come with some information, so we're ready. I'll finish up by saying that, you know, you're looking at a sixty-seven year old building that's pretty antiquated. I don't know why the state says leave it open at this point, except they're, they're a little bit of a new facility on. Block construction, no insulation, employees being paid, you go down on overtime many times to keep the boiler going outside heated, which is just flying outside. Not enough room for people to assemble as a group for training, or even just gathering amongst themselves. Can't cart trucks with their equipment such as plows on. They have to be dismounted so the truck can be put away. They go back out to replow a storm, they put all that equipment back on. These are some of the considerations we had when we made our discussions towards this building. What we kind of arrived at too is if the facility was to come to fruition, a new one, that is, this building shouldn't be knocked down. It's, it's going to make a good dry storage building for a lot of stuff, but it won't have to be in a new building, like flagging equipment, cones, trailers with pressure washers and things that don't have to be used. We did get a very, very generous gift, I'm going to call it, from the county of Raptin. They gave us their plans to their building. So in my understanding is, it could be as much as a hundred thousand dollars gift to us. So, you know, you don't really want to, or to say spit in their eye, but Chuck had very good version agreement with us, so they're not looking for trucks in terms of crash or. We just want to try to keep the momentum going. On the open house on April ninth, we estimated about sixty people visit. The, there was a lot of empathy for what we're trying to do and why we found you. They, no one had any, that we heard, any kind of negative sentiment towards a replacement or a change, you know, ability. Phil has brought a lot of information to us. He knows of buildings like Chuck mentioned around that have been taken down, some that even haven't been erected or purchased. Some of those are some distance away. But with the supply interruptions we are seeing right now, probably will continue to see, things that are sitting on the ground right now are the closest thing you can get from short there. He did tell us about one project he worked on where they had to send a certified check ahead just to secure the order on the building alone. That, that doesn't mean getting ready to put it on a truck, you know, they, they wanted their money. They went out and touched the building, he said, and said, okay, they'll send us this, and it'll pop some on. I don't want to get too long on it, I hope these guys will take some more and talk a little bit about their perspective on what we're doing and why we're asking you to consider this. We're asking for you to initiate a special meeting. Joe, if, if cost of a meeting is a concern for anyone on the board, it wouldn't have to be a single function, there are some other things that could be done at that meeting. I'd speak to that if you want to, but I think this discussion needs to continue first. So we're asking you to consider this request. Anybody else that would like to jump in?
I, I agree with Paul, on Paul's points. I think personally that the building probably should be tore down afterwards. Basically, for building a big enough building to put all that equipment in there. Like he said, that Chuck got the plans, that's a huge gift. Doesn't have to be exactly that, but it's a starting point. You get places on to keep it moving, go in the right direction. We need to, we need to go somewhere with this. Like you said, just keep going to get people to realize what we have is antique. And it's two thousand and twenty-two, and it's not going to get any cheaper, it's going to get more expensive. The cotton wood is ridiculous. Excuse me, to heat the place, you're just, you're, you're, it's just a waste, it's a waste of time. Stuff's always breaking down in there. The facility down there, the bathroom is disgusting. The water has issues down there, that's something that needs to be taken care of. Like you said, they can't fit trucks inside, spend hundreds of thousands on equipment and send it outside. Why send, you know what this weather does and up here to equipment, and just should have a little bit more longevity if it's inside taken care of. It's a perfect place for a town meeting if it's raining, too. We plenty of room, they put trucks outside, we plenty parking down there. People can all fit in one building if need be. Plenty of room for training, all, all those things. We just need to get up to compliance. I know that Jim knows that the fire alarm system there is garbage. Like Jim Wobber said, the, the electric is out of whack, they can't run stuff. There's all kinds of problems, and it's all just got to be taken care of at some point. So we get on the ball and keep it going and get somewhere. Maybe people should go down there and visit, have another open house, and really they can see what it is. It's antique, it's, it's time for, time for something new that we, we need to last the next fifty, sixty, seventy years.
I had an argument with my wife. I said, I said I wasn't going to talk, she says, you can't go to a meeting without talking. Here you got me now. Yeah, and you, you pull into the building, there's, there's, there's no room. They can't even pull, some of their full-size truck in there, can't work on them, and there's no room to maneuver trucks in front. Looking into this, we found out we do have ownership on some more land further down, which is a nice spot for the building. Let's use more, more equipment outside and trucks around. Be worldly, worldly better. This building could be kept, it would be cheaper to keep it, keep it in place than tear it down. Wouldn't be any maintenance costs involved, but we could use it for, like they said, dry storage or, or paint booths or undercoating booth or something like that. Definitely store the equipment in it. Going with a, a metal building, and everything's expensive right now. Metal building is the most economical way to go when you're talking that size, no doubt about it. And right now, there are a lot of opportunities with them that come up on a moment's notice. So it's time to, I don't think we can come to you right now and say, listen, we can, you know, for X amount of dollars, we can have a building, we can't. They won't hold the price for thirty days, never mind the time it takes to get through this process. But we need a, we need a bigger building, we need that room in front of it and behind it. They got the space for it now. It's a, it, it's a building that gets, it's well justified, I mean, this thing gets used every day. Not like a, nothing against the fire station, but you know, as a big project there, how many, how much use does that get, side storing trucks? This is a building that's come set use. And Westminster has one of the, one of the highest amount of dirt roads in the state for a town. Definitely could justify this. I'm not sure how the process would go, goes. My understanding is we need a special town meeting. And that would be a vote to determine if the town people are.
Like you're a forward, I go forward with that. Say ask for some of the money not to exceed.
I think so, ask for some money not to exceed.
If I can put my two cents in?
Sure.
Look, we've already set tax rate for this year, so you can't give me enough. So.
Well, yeah, we understand, we understand that.
Right. Well, I was just saying, we, we wouldn't be asking for money, you're looking, you're asking for approval. And personally, I think we should send Chuck a long time ago, we need to put it in the budget, no question about it. I think the ideal, the select board has to be behind it and do all, borrow the money or talk to it and everything. I would, if we could just wait until March, I would say, wait, get all the plans. I think the select board should put X amount of money, let's say fifty thousand, in it to approach the voters and say, listen, this is what we need in March and.
Hold on, you want us to wait till next March?
Yes.
To get moving?
Yeah.
On stuff to like?
Yes.
Forward or not?
You got, you got no choice, the, the tax rate's already set for this year, you know? So, and you need plans, you need to get going on it. So if the plan is to sit and come back with all the plans, as long as we have enough money in the budget to go to the voters and ask for it, is maybe the site board could get started and all that. I think what you're trying to do is right, I don't know, I don't think you need the approval at this point of, of the voters. We need to actually come back with a solid plan that this is exactly what we're going to spend the money on. This is what we're going to do. As long as the select board's approval is that we're behind it, then that's really what you need now. Because you need the approval of the select board to just basically say, this is the plan, go ahead, pursue it. We'll, we'll go to the voters and ask for the approval, but we would need the concrete that, this is the building, this is really what it's going to cost, so you could do it. Even if the voters tell you yes, no, how they say yes, if they don't know what it's going to cost and what it is. If you don't plan for this.
So how are we going to get the approval, this is the second time we've been here in two weeks. After we went to the town meeting, they tell us we have to come to the select board.
We do.
So we're looking for approval, so say we have the plans that Chuck has, and we go to somebody and say, this is what we want to build, how much is this going to cost? So is that what you want us to do? To give to, now to give to you and say, are you behind us, are you not? Like, I, I mean, are you behind us or are you not?
We, we don't know what the plan's at, we don't know what it's going to cost. But I think what you're looking for is the select board's approval that.
Well, so I'm looking for you to say, all four of you to say, yes, we're behind you to take these prints and find out what an estimated cost is.
What you're looking for, exactly what you're looking for.
That's so, that's what I'm asking, so I guess I'm asking you is, are you guys behind us to take those plans and see if we can navigate some number for you to bring back here for you to?
Go to the voters for it.
To go to the voters, I guess, wait until, you know, next March when, I mean, I guess that's the question.
That, that's what, I'm only one.
Because what, what we, what we're coming in now doing, what you guys asked, actually Kevin asked for us to do last time, so we're doing that, and now you're giving me another answer, another thing, answer that, or question or order to like, oh, we can't do that now, we have to do this. Okay, so is that what, so can, are you guys behind us making an attempt to get you a number to move forward?
I'm just one of the select board, but that would.
I get you, I'm asking all four of you.
That would be.
Are you, are you guys behind that? Because if not, I feel like personally, I'm wasting my time. I plan on being, I've been in this town three years, I'm from Bellas Falls, okay? I plan on being here a long time. I plan on, I, we, we need to do something, no matter whether it's a fire station, it's a town hall, it's whatever. The roads, we, we need to keep, keep forging on. But if you, every time I come here, you give me a different answer, or tell me to go in a different direction, I'm just going in circles. So, and I feel that all of us came here tonight, and now you've, personally, I feel that you wasted my time. So could you, as a board, give us an answer that, hey, if you come back with some type of number for us to work from, we can, we can talk about this and move this forward?
That's where I'm coming from, but I'm only one of them. You need to come back to us because we were the, we would be the board that's.
I'm asking you guys, you, Kevin, Jason, and Kathleen, Katrina, sorry. I'm asking you guys.
So I got three other people, four, four or five other people that want to speak, so hold on a minute. Pauline, did you have something?
I just, um, it was a long time ago when we were talking about a special meeting, and I just wanted to alert everyone of the process for a, a special meeting. And that is, you know, it's a statute, and it sounds like it's a moot point now because we're talking about March, which was the clerk's recommendation all along. But since it's not looking like it's moving towards a special meeting, I'm. the clerk's recommendation all along. But since it's not looking like it's moving towards a special meeting, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay.
We've established that.
Uh, Molly?
So, I got nothing to do with these guys other than I know Molly's a great guy. But as I sit here and I listen, and I've listened to some of this conversation in the past, um, still I wasn't gonna talk. But we are talking about something way bigger than a building as far as I'm concerned. I've been here for thirty-two years, you know, not many of us are in a box, so you're all stuck with me. And then I think very fondly, you know, always told me that ninety-eight percent of what we do is presentation. We are trying to attract people to come to work for our town. And we're going in and then looking at a building that is a disgrace. And we're asking them to do safety meetings in rooms that are more uncomfortable and tighter than where we're sitting right now for a select board meeting. So I wanna know what I have to do. And I've got it right here. Special meetings. A legislative body may warrant a special municipal meeting when it deems it necessary and shall call a special meeting on the application of five percent of voters. A special meeting shall be warranted in sixty days of receipt of the application by the municipal clerk. A voter may withdraw, is her name, from a petition for a special meeting anytime prior to the sound of the warning by a majority of legislative body. What I'm hearing is that maybe our town clerk and maybe you guys don't wanna fool around with a special meeting, but I, as a towns person, as a taxpayer, as a business person, see no reason to push this until next March. Correct? You're wrong. A special meeting doesn't mean that we're gonna go spend that money. But what it does do is it shows these guys and gives these guys the approval to go look for all those answers. And if you went to anyone in this business and asked them to put a lot of time and effort into a bid, and you ought to know, you're in the sales business. You're asking them to get information and spend time on something that may never happen because we haven't even set it up in a meeting and approved that it's okay to, to put that money out for next year. It, buildings aren't gonna get built this year anyways. But somehow, people who are gonna be involved in this process need to see that there is a commitment to us as a town to do this. For people to sit down and write specs and a bid for everything that needs to happen costs money. And so we, we have to be able to have the special meeting and be able to assure whoever we go to that even if it's, even though it's a bid process and you're gonna give it to three people, that somebody's gonna win that bid. So they're not wasting their time. Now it's up to whoever can do it. Can, can they give us a price that's gonna go out till next March? Probably not. But we can do the process. But if you came to me, and this has nothing to do with me. I'm not involved in a metal building whatsoever. But if you came to me, anybody, and asked me to do a whole bunch of work on building this size, but we don't really know if I'm building it on. I'd put it on the backside of my desk and it wouldn't get touched. Because there's too much other work that needs to be done that's happening or is gonna happen. So presentation is ninety-eight percent of what we do. That's the way it is. We're trying to hire new help and good help and we're asking them to work in an environment that is awful. And we need a special meeting. How do I do that? How do I, how do I do this? Somebody help me.
I'm not the one that asks, cause I don't know either. So. Can I get two other people?
Absolutely.
Uh, I think Jim and then I'll come to Chris. Did you have something, Jim?
Yep. Well, like I said, I go like this one, cause it's, it's from way back. Um, this is a Fram oil commercial. You're gonna pay a little now or you're gonna pay a lot more later. Right now, that fire alarm system, I'm here for compliance. I'm not here as the electrician. I'm here to fire your fire alarms in your buildings. That fire alarm system there, if they're crafted out of ground, you're done. Cause there are no products for it. It's ancient Chinese secrets. They don't, I can't get you anything. I can get you maybe a couple of smoke detectors. Main board goes natural, all right. It needs a new system. So like I said, over time, we're saying you're, you're, you're beating a dead horse here. Because who wants to put ten grand in, into a building that's inadequate? But, and then you bring it up to, to code. More money wasted. Because we don't want the place anyway. We want it gone because it, it's out of compliance. The bathroom's not even ADA. Oki will tell you that. And I, and I'm not a plumber and I know that. So this is what we're saying. If you want dollar signs, it's, it's worth over ten. Those probably, they're changing the, the numbers quarterly on, on, on fire alarm stuff. I can't even keep up. So in two weeks, new, new round of prices come out. But we've put bids and stuff in to upgrade that for this administration, most of the dead Molly's thing. And I'll put it over there cause it's not important today, cause it's still working. But the, the compliance stuff, there's, there's no CO detectors in there. There, there's no strobes in the bathroom. There's no smoke detector in the break room. The, all the heat detectors are forty years old. They should have gone twenty. You should buy. So, I mean, but that's huge amounts of money that you're just, right now, we're, we're all just doing this. When I walk in to see Chuck every year. Chuck, I hope that, I hope when I push this button, it stays working when I leave. Because it's a ticking time bomb. So this is what we're saying now. It's, the time is there. So, and that's just, that's just my section, you know? So probably push it closer to twenty now. You know, and the state might let us use, they use the old wiring. They might not. Some places they've given grandfather, other places, I don't like that brand. It was known to be taxed. You gotta replace it. So then there goes the cost again. So, you know, it's just, how, how much? You know, if, if, there's a dollar sign right there in just the alarm system. And that's just fire. I don't know. I have nothing to do with the, you know, the burglar system, which Chuck knows works when, today and may work tomorrow.
Well, we have bypassed it, you said. It's already got issues. So we're gonna cheat it to make it, yeah, for a couple of years, so.
You know, but Russ's, well, one hat, one hat does all plan, as he found out here, doesn't work. You know, you can get countryside and they'll come in and they'll, they'll do your, you know, fire alarm, they'll do the burglar monitor and all this. But three years later, I come in and say the fire alarm hasn't been inspected. So here we are, I'm back again. But that's because, you know, we try to save money because we went with a company that does everything. Sometimes putting all your eggs in one basket, it doesn't work. So I'm just telling you the fire alarm, what's wrong with the burglar system? That's this gentleman over here deals with. You know, and has trouble with it and probably has trouble getting service. So you get somebody else doing, you know, in there that's local and reliable for that. But this wearing one, you know, putting on all eggs in one basket has actually not helped the town. It's hurt the town. And it showed here. You know, we finally had to come back in because, well, this wasn't done. That was out of compliance and all that. So we bring this building up to speed. And we should. This is a nice, nice facility. Put a lot of money into it. Fire station, nice facility, put a lot of money into it. But these guys keep me going to work and they're working out of a dumpster. You know, major town employees that we rely on seven days, twenty-four hours most winters. Not all three fifty-six, but, or three fifty-two, but and then, and they're working out of a band-aid. It's just time. It, it don't end that. That's, I'm done.
There's no question for me that I've been supportive of this to replace the building. I'm on the record for that. And I anticipate that to go forward. I'm a supportive. Question of funding and process though is a serious one. We talked about bond. In fact, I've done a lot of this with Chuck, gone forward with him. I know exactly what you're talking about. We have millions of dollars worth of equipment over there. These men go out and they're there, rain, shine. They put their life in them, not being dramatic, at risk when they go. We saw that, which we're gonna talk about briefly in the storm on, uh, last, last July, right? Uh, so I'm in full agreement with that. Um, the question of the funding requires us to get really a hard number. And a facility, um, hard look at a facility. I've gone back to Westmoreland, cause they went through a hell of a time, but they finally succeeded. There's a good example over there for the new fire station. So you could get, um, what exactly is, is we need to protect our equipment, to extend the life of it. Hey, we have that flexibility you just talked about. We needed a, uh, forgive me, because this isn't my bailiwick. We needed a backhoe, I believe it was. It was dangerous. There was a question of why we should extend its life. And we said, you know what? It's dangerous. It's not effective. We went ahead. We had some criticism, but we bought a brand new vehicle. And it's been working out terrific, based on Chuck's recommendation and other recommendations from the guys there. So we're wide, I'm certainly, I'm speaking for myself. I am a thousand percent on board with this. But we do have to do it right in the sense that this sounds like it's gonna be, if you want it done right, it sounds like this is gonna be an expensive building. And I'll make one quick other comment. Regarding funding, we've, we've learned a lot, at least I have on the board. So this falls under the jurisdiction. We're not completely, uh, uh, going back to Molly's excellent comments regarding a special meeting. This board can make decisions under twenty-four BSA and the sub statute seventeen eighty-six, so I'm on the record that we've done it before. We may borrow funds in anticipation of the sale of bonds, as long as that term is only one year and one year only. So we're not powerless to come up with money. But we do have to make a compelling argument as to exactly why would we make that decision? And that will require substantial plans, a bit, not, you know, a business plan. You know, what this building's gonna look like, how it's gonna, how to protect the equipment. Is it gonna be able to fit all of our equipment now that we have now? But anticipation in the future, your excellent comments regarding safety protocol, upgrade for technology, all of those things can be done. So I'm with you a thousand percent. That's me. I'm talking for myself. So I wouldn't want you to come in here and waste your time. Uh, what we need is a plan. You know, and we need to have an idea of what it's gonna look like and how much do you think this thing's gonna cost? Cause we all know right now materials and expertise are at a premium. And we're gonna be asking the taxpayers for a lot of money.
Correct. But how are we gonna get to that point? You're saying you can get, how are we gonna get to that point to give you something? Come here, we ask for a special meeting to get people involved to say, hey, yes, this is a facility we have. Look at it. Go down, take a look for yourself. Vote on it. Say, yes, we're gonna, we wanna, we want the town to, we want you guys, town.
What are you asking for? Are you asking us for money to actually do the, draw up the actual official plan to this building?
Yeah, I mean, well, we, we came back here with this information and what you told us to do last time. And then he says, well, we don't need a special meet, meet. You need to make them next March. It's like, okay, well.
I didn't say that. But he's a member of the board.
He, I said, he said. I didn't say he said.
No, but he's, he's, he's a member of the board. He has a right to.
I get it. I get it.
But I was here.
It's, you're right. No, I get it. And, and, and me as, you know, uh, person lives in the town, I mean, I have a right to be here too.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and voice my opinion. My opinion's not always right. It's an opinion. But I just think that like, that's where I just felt all the waste of time. It's like Molly said, you know, you spend all this time out there doing these things and then we get shut down again. It's like, okay, now we're, we're getting told till next March. But like what we need for.
I haven't said that.
No, but he said, I'm gonna say what he said. I'm not, it's not he, she said, whatever. Point is, is like, how, how do, as a group, cause it's not just us, it's you guys too. How do we move forward to take the next step to get this going way before next March? So we can keep momentum going, get somebody interested there. Like you said, do we need, do we need to hire somebody to draw up, do we need to get an architect? Or engineer to drop plans?
That'd be my two cents because.
So how do we ask you? So now we gotta ask you for money for that, right? But he just said there's no money till next year.
Well, I don't know that.
So, and that's the question, I guess, to get this rolling. Like, let's design something or take the plans that we have and say, does this building look like this is what we have? Maybe take some pictures of, uh, of Grafton, get them over to, get them printed out so people can see what Grafton looks like. So they don't have to go all the way out there, do all that. I mean, is that, is that what we need to do? I guess, just send us in, in, in the right direction, not in a circle chasing my tail. Just like, let us.
Well, as a layman, uh, also too, I, I would think when you're looking to make such a large presentation in front of the town. And again, I, I'm just, as an observer, fellow taxpayer, there are gonna be, you know, there's three thousand people in the town.
Yeah.
Several hundred should show up to meetings. And not all of them are gonna be behind this idea.
I hear that.
As we just saw over in Westmoreland. So my, my view, if you hang around and show it tonight, we have everything in order, such as what's this thing gonna look like and why it's necessary. I think that's, as Molly said, ninety-eight percent of, of it is your presentation. You got one shot at it. You better have it. This is what the building looks like. This is our inventory that we're protecting. This is the ancillary that we think it will make this cost effective and also can be upgraded over time efficiently. Its design will enable us to consistently upgrade it and meet future expectations, new technologies, upgrades from the legislature that we get for our safety and other things. So that's where I am. It's a question of strengthening the, what this thing's gonna look like and how much it's gonna cost.
So can I just, I think that what that means is we're gonna, the group is gonna need a little bit of money to be able, because they're probably gonna have to hire an architect to draw this out for them, so they have exactly what they want. They have some great plans. They can give it to them. I think that's why, I know that's why I pushed for a special meeting because you know, we can all say it's not in the budget, but what can we do to find it so that we can get this started so that we're not waiting until March to have that started. You know, and that's, and there must be people in the state that would help us with who we should be talking to. But we don't know this. I mean.
I don't believe we, I'm not gonna interrupt you. I don't believe we need a, we need a special meeting to do, to hire or authorize exploratory, um, dollars to, uh, we've done it for, uh, what's the, uh, help me out here, the pit for the outfit?
We, we've done, since I've been here for ninety years, we've done three that have been killed because that's what bothers me when we didn't have. This group is in front of it and like I said, don't get me wrong. I've been pushing for this for the last five years. Why I refuse to fix the roof on it? Because I did not put enough money in it. And they've been right along pushing, Chuck, we need to put a new building up. So, so, so I'm, I'm on that board.
When stuff breaks and then we.
Right. So, and I've been everywhere and I've done a lot of towns like, we gotta, don't fix this building. Come on. So we hadn't put money in it. My feeling was to put up this new building. But whenever we went to the voters, there's another group that'll be against it. And then they prepare their work and they're going like, well, why didn't you put the money into this and that? And I said, the first step normally is you come to the select board and you, are you behind it? Select board says, yeah, we're behind it. We'll, we'll, we'll get the information and we'll sell it. That's what I was trying to say is like, if you're just gonna go to the voters right now and say, let's have a meeting, get, what are you gonna say? I don't know the exact plan. The voters, if they're unsure, they're gonna say no. If you want the voters to have approval, you would think you'd want the select board to say, hey, this is a great, this is how we're gonna pay for it. This is how long it's gonna take. All that could be done between now and March. If you need to have a special meeting, but if your special meeting is to just go ask, how, are you in favor? I would assume ninety percent of people raise, yeah, I'm in favor, but what's it gonna cost? Now, you wanna say it?
I need to get Chris and Ally. Neither one of spoke yet. We'll get them. Go ahead, Chris.
I don't care either way about the building. It, it's completely up to what anybody else wants to do. Um, but I did a little bit of simple, simple research on the internet. And every other town, every other highway department that was trying to persuade their taxpayers that they needed a new facility has, I mean, I, I can give you guys what I found. I mean, it's, it's incredible stuff. You can't just come here and bather uh, the select board. What do we need to do? What do we need to do? It's not like, you guys don't know any more than anybody else what you need to do. You need to look it up. Here's the town of Milton. Go to the town of Milton. It's a huge thing. It talks about, give us feedback. What's our next step? Let's stay informed. I mean, at the last meeting I was at, Chuck, uh, Chip, Chip told Chuck that he had all kinds of extra money to spend in his budget. And I think his budget goes to what, July first, right? So if he has all kinds of extra money in the July first budget, why doesn't he just ask you guys? I have to put this together because I'm pretty sure that if you go to a bank or a bond through the state or anything like that, and you just walk up and say, I need two million dollars for a building. There's no financial institution out there that's going to hand you two million dollars on the fact that you need the money for a building. You have to have all this in place. I understand people are impatient and they want this to happen. I understand people are impatient and they want this to happen immediately, but sometimes you have to go through a process, you know?
Oh, Chris, I don't think, I don't think anybody is trying to be impatient. We're just trying to work together and we're asking, I, I don't know what we need either. I mean, yes, you did that research, that's awesome. That's great. I'd love to look at that and read that. But like at the same point in time, as we're just asking for a direction. So I guess if we, if, if we're saying to you, they have money enough, okay, can we, can we look at getting some money so that we can hire somebody to design something for us that the community would be able to utilize for the town garage? And then now we have all that stuff together, then we can get prices and then we can, I guess, present it to everybody that has a special meeting or by the time it's all done, maybe it is next March by the time. It probably would be next March by now, but we got to get on, if we don't get on somebody's schedule to figure that out, we're not going to, it's going to be even further along. So if we get that and go, okay, I don't have thousands of dollars to give somebody to go design something, but if, if the, if the select board is willing to find the money to get us to start that so that we can get prices and then at town meeting we say, or a special meeting, whatever it may be, we say, listen, this is what we like to build. Like you said, have it on boards, have pictures, have a cost, all that stuff. And that's, that's what we need to do.
Yes.
But we, we just don't know where to start. And it seems like not, nobody really kind of, we not kind of know where to start, but then we just, we go back and forth. It's like, let's just get a plan and go forward. It's not that anybody.
I'll get you in a minute though. Ally, go ahead.
The reason, the reason that this is, because it's going to cost so much money, okay? So they are really not authorized to say, go ahead and do it. And neither were, I'm not a voter here.
Yep, I get you.
Was, but I'm, I'm not. So neither of these folks able to, they're all voters here, they can't automatically make that decision. That's why we thought the first process in talking to Pauline would be a, would be a special meeting to see if the voters even want to move forward because it's not cheap. It would give them a great gift, a great gift on brand.
No, I agree with you.
Awesome. But to spend this kind of money and start the process, it really should be spoken with all your information. Yes, you need money to start the process, but I believe you would really benefit from having more ducks in a row and bringing it. I agree, I've been down there, I don't want to go down there.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is a special meeting with like the plans that we have.
You need an actual proposal.
And present that.
Yes, you need an actual proposal.
Yeah.
Right, so no one's, I don't think anyone's not listening or not wanting to, to help or, or move forward as a process. So with that kind of money, someone who has two million dollars going into the budget.
Admittedly, I have no idea what that proposal is.
Right.
Or what that, uh, process is.
So I, I don't know, you have money in your budget, Chuck, to start this process? So.
You could come back to us, exactly. In the meeting could be, if we normally would have more informational meetings, so if you come back to us, me as a select board would bring in, hey, we're going to have an open meeting. Everybody can have the, so what.
Be a public forum.
Be a public forum and we would actually have a meeting. It's free, it's cheap.
If you look at Vermont statutes, it actually tells you in Vermont statutes.
Yeah.
What has to be done in order to proceed with this. And that's also simply you go to Vermont statutes on the internet and it tells you what process you need to go through. Uh, like, let's say it doesn't pass the first time. The voters are coming and say, no way, we're not doing that. You guys only have one more chance to do that within the, you know, like say, say next month you have your special meeting and they say no. And you got one more chance to come back and do it again. I think it's a ninety day, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the statute in front of me.
We normally can have two or three.
There's just a process that has to be gone through and if you, if you look on the Vermont statutes, it does everything.
Molly.
It's pretty simple.
I think we have a lot of knowledge in this room right now. And what I, what I don't unders, what I haven't heard is we have whole little volunteers right here that are trying to stack something. What they're looking to our leaders to help us know how to stack that. Nobody, everybody knows how to build a building this year. But Chris has done a little bit of homework, you guys have done a lot of work. So we've done, they've done work, but we don't want to keep hearing that we can't. We want to hear, how do we get five thousand dollars to hire somebody to help us get this designed? So when we do present, when they present to the taxpayers, to you guys, they have something other than a set of plans that were done a long time ago for Grafton and a lot of knowledge. But I really think that what they're asking us for isn't two million dollars right now. It's how do we get what monies they need to get the information that the public is going to want? Because you're asking for guys to give a lot of time, a lot of their own time to figure this out. And they've given a lot of their own time already. But now it's come to the point where now they need help. Now they need help from you guys. What is our next step? How do we do that? Where can I, where, where can we take some money, if there is money? Where maybe we're going to do a project or whatever, where some monies can get set aside so that they can have the right paperwork to, to have that open forum? Because right now, they, you know, they've met, they've talked, they, they all agree. You guys appear to agree, a couple of you, maybe a couple don't, I'm not really sure.
No, I'll speak for myself, I'm in support of it as well.
I think.
The process moving forward though, I don't, I don't know how.
So that's what they're here for.
Well, that's, that's what, and it obviously sounds like Chris found some good information. I mean, I personally didn't even know where to start again, I think of things to type into the computer and get there. But I guess to have a presentation, to give you a presentation with like plans of what it would look like, you know, to get to that point, to tell people, uh, to show people, we need money to have that done. And I don't know how much that costs. I mean, Phil might know a little bit more in that area, but.
Three fire stations for different towns in the area and each time with a process the same way. We go out and RFP newspapers and get three bids from an architectural engineering firm to do.
General, a general contractor.
Concrete plans or a general contractor, right? And then, then, so you, uh, you get the lowest bid or whatever you think out of these three prices, then you go back to the select board and say, listen, I need ten grand, I need a hundred grand for a set of plans. And we got the money. I don't know how. And then you took that, did the plans, and then plans are done, you get three bids on the project. A firm building plan, you know, labor and industry improved plan that they can bid on and build to. It, it, it took a while, but that.
We got to get to that point.
Chuck, the spend money after.
The first process, I think the first step in the process would be getting competitive bids just on getting finished plans.
Sure.
Coming to you guys with a, okay, Joe Schmogel, architect says, you know, we'll get, we'll give you complete plans for this amount of money.
But can I ask you a question to go back? Because I think we're four, but because I'm trying to help you steer to where I can help, help it. Because right now I can't help realize on this. If you guys all get together, why are you going to hire an architect? If you already got a plan, if you came back to the select board and you said, hey, one thing about it, we agree on, this is where the building is going to sit. This is what the building is going to look like and we need X amount of dollars to just now to go and hock some architect to get a little more details. That would be, in my mind, your next step, come back to the board. We would then go out and say, okay, now we need to go find X amount of money. But we, you're heading down the right direction. This just needs to come back, what he keeps saying, hard.
Let me, let me get Jim, Bucky and Paul. Go ahead, Jim. Did you have something else other than?
Yeah, I did. Now, is, does any of you guys seen the Grafton plans? Do you not like that bell leaf? Has anybody not seen them?
As long as, with the committee, you guys come back to us and that's what it is.
Well, because like you said, it's a gift, a hundred thousand dollar gift here. Why do we have to reinvent the wheel if we are already holding?
I think the term architect is what's throwing people off. I don't think you need an architect necessarily. You need a general contractor that's going to put numbers together or some, or something.
I'm, I'm, I'm still.
Go ahead, sir.
Buck Adams, Chuck asked me to join committee back for just site regulated, which is very minimal to this. But, um, we do have the plans for Grafton. I don't know if that building is suitable for, if you decided on that. But I agree with what Craig just said. I don't know if we need any money to get budget numbers. There's nothing to proceed with, it's budget numbers. They're going to be twenty percent higher. But is that enough to present to the board to then do something?
At that point, when you're making us.
It's for me.
Plumbing, electrical.
Yeah. Yeah, it's for me.
So we need to take that plan.
You need to come back to us and make us commit to it, say, yes, we're behind it, let's go do it, we'll work with you.
So before I say we don't need money, does, is that something that you would have time to do or you, would you rather have? Because you're going to have to reach out to electrical, concrete.
Or a couple of general contractors and they can cover that all.
But they're not going to do it for free.
No, I know that.
If you get into a GC, now you're paying. So my question is, you don't have.
I know I have time to do that.
That's what I thought. So.
There needs to be some money approved to get somebody to help us do that.
I'm not trying to figure out that, but anyway, that's.
No, 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 but the reality is.
And that's part of the plan, when you keep saying this, like if you come to us, plan, now, hey, I need to come up with, not eight thousand dollars to proceed with it. You're now coming to the, to the select board who has authority to make that decision and help you make that decision.
That means you need to go with an architect or something, if you're going to use that building, have that designed. So you go to a GC and say, listen, this one.
That was the reason we looked at that building and said, yeah, it'll work for that purpose.
Which it appears to be a great, it's perfect size.
So you've got a little less than a month left in your, in this budget.
Sure.
Do you have monies, funds enough left to be able, I don't know what it costs, but to be able to hire somebody to put that proposal together? And if you did, do you need us to approve that?
So what's that going to cost to get a GC to put that together?
It can be a little more involved than just copying the Grafton building. The labor and industry or fire safety division, they're called now, they're going to get involved in a building. That plan, I don't, it had a concrete plan, but fire and safety get involved, the wastewater permit, it's going to be different. Be stormwater permit, it's going to be different.
Somebody else, but I think, I think, I think we're talking budget numbers. Like, no, I don't.
Well.
Because, because you're not going to get somebody, you, we all know this, we're all in the industries. They're not going to get anybody stopping there doing it, doing it, do estimates. Nobody's even accepting work right now. So I think we're talking about budget numbers. So a twenty percent range of a hundred thousand dollars of electrical, it might be a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Maybe not to exceed on something, but.
But that's what we did that day.
We know that something might cost forty thousand, okay, maybe fifty thousand. Electrical might be a hundred, it's a hundred and forty.
That's how we came up not to exceed two million dollars. All you guys stood there in the shop, looked at their plans, went over and said, well, I think this is what the dirt works going to cost. I think this was the heat and the cost.
So I, and, and that's true.
And that's how we ended up with that.
So we have, we have all done that. So I guess we need to know how to present it.
And I'm just like, like I said, I'm not trying to cause trouble. My thought is, if you want this to happen, I would be as prepared as possible. I would have, I would have everything down, I would have drawings. I mean, it may, it may cost you money, but.
We've done.
I can tell you right now, when people.
We've done all that, we've had an open house. People could have come and looked at this stuff. I invited everybody, I put it on Facebook, I put it in the paper. I, I didn't, the only thing I didn't do was put it on the radio.
Only thing we haven't done.
I didn't see anybody, the only person that showed up from the select board was Jason and Kevin brought donuts. But I know, and I appreciate that, but I was saying, nobody was interested enough to even come.
I, I think you're going to find that the public will support you.
I think so too.
It's a supportive town. We've always supported well thought out and well proposed plans. To just go to a meeting and say, hey, we need two million dollars, this is my proposal, or talk to Lucas about the plumbing, it's not going to fly. You're going to have to have something.
Yeah, we, we, we need, we need.
Not wanting to.
To take the prints that we have, if that's how we're choosing to do. Make some phone, I can make some phone calls tomorrow to some general contractors. See what the range of, if we have a set of prints, what the range would be for them to quote that somewhat. When, when, and it takes six months, it takes six months.
I don't know, twelve thousand dollars in my budget right now for, for building maintenance stuff that I could tell it that.
So if I find those number, but hold on, if I find those numbers for somebody to, to do that, then we come back with that set of plans and those numbers from that one person, we don't need three, we need one, come back and give that to you.
That's not exactly what they're asking for. They want a presentation of why the equipment needs to be in, what is the equipment? We need, we can come up with the numbers for the, we need, we can come up with the industry numbers. We need somebody to develop, I think, a presentation, why it's needed, what's going to be in it, what's the benefit?
Yes, that's exactly.
Yeah, I'm not trying to be obtuse. Where's the state guy come in for the cap on the bridge? Um, I don't know if it was here, I know Craig was here and we sat through what was an hour, hour and a half and it was very well done, okay? And they gave us three scenarios. You could do this over ten years, you could do this over twenty years. This one's going to cost today, this one's going to cost in ten years. That's what we're talking about, that's all we're talking about.
A presentation.
That's a presentation, that's all we're talking about.
So tell them Grafton and Townsend, the select board put together the presentation for the guys.
It, it, it gets, it gets there. First, if you come present it to us and we use that presentation to help sell it, because the select board is going to sell the whole package. That's what I'm trying to say. You come back to us, we're all on board, we're, okay, we're going to use that presentation to sit and go back after the voters to get them to come to the meeting. Say, hey, we're behind this, we think this is a great idea, let's have a meeting, sometimes two or three, just to hear input so we can, before we go to the voters.
Craig, so Craig, you've expressed, you're, you're behind this.
Hundred percent of it, yeah.
Kevin, you're behind this.
Hundred percent.
I said I'm behind this. Katrina, you're behind this? Okay, so instead of beating this all night long, we need, you need to come back to us with a proposal. As Bucky said, who, what, where and why in approximate, I'm not, it's not going to be to the dollar, we totally get that, but a reasonable figures and then we can proceed from there.
And then you present it to the voters.
We, it, it would be over several times. It could, could be even that we ask the voters to go to Grafton and look at the ones too.
Does the select board present it to them? That's a, I don't know that answer. If we, if we, I would assume we would, we're, we're the governing body.
That's why, that, that, no, I think that's, I think that's probably a question that they're all kind of wondering. You think they're going to put a presentation on or are you guys?
Uh, I would, I would say we would put it on and you would speak to it.
The best way to explain, you're going to prepare as to do it.
Trying to talk to Jason. Thank you. As the chair, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm, I'm serious about, you know, you've got guys that are working hard here and are going to put a lot of volunteer time in to do this, but I'm pretty sure none of them want to stand up and try to present this. You know, that's, it's not what we do. Um, so we're looking for somebody that.
It's not, it's not what I do either, but if I had to, I would do it.
But thank you.
Right, but if we bring it to you, like just as Bucky, Molly just said, we bring it to you guys, you guys are behind it. We have the proper, we have everything in line, just like Chris said, everything being this way. We present it to you, you guys agree with it, then you bring it to special meeting or you bring it to whatever town meeting if it's that, and it ends up being that long away, that far away.
I got no problem proposing it, but I'm not, I'm not going to stand there and propose something that I don't have any idea what I'm talking about. Which is why you would need the documentation or at least, why do we need this? Okay, well.
Yeah, correct, get it, get it. I don't, I don't want.
Let me just get Paul. Paul?
Boy, sorry, this conversation up, known it, it's going to be a long one. Um, I think we've come full circle. The, the request, we're not here to badger the select board. We're here for your guidance. You are the end all be all. You have to find the money, you have to approve it. But within me, and the point to asking for a special meeting is if I was in your chairs and even as a taxpayer, I'd like to know that the whole town is supportive or the majority of the town is supportive.
Hundred percent.
So the reluctance to a special meeting is, is a little, I, I don't understand it yet.
I'm not reluctant, I'm not reluctant to anything, I don't know where to go.
Let the people of this town speak. Money comes second, voter opinion comes first. There's another issue here that I keep carrying tonight and I just have to say it before I go on board. At town meeting, we were told that get ready for a million dollar fire truck. Not a hidden eyebrow, but it's, but time after time tonight on the board, I have heard, that's a lot of money. For that kind of money, it's, you know, it's defeating, it's defeating the conversation to me to hear that. It's setting a negative tone already for any decisions we make. Sixty-four thousand, forty-eight thousand, fifty-four thousand for a stone wall. Whereas I'm not even going to come for it. Is that available this year, Craig? It, it's mixed signals for me right now. I'm just trying to separate what the process is.
A lot of.
We've all put some groundwork in. We're asking for some leadership, is what we're asking for. If you guide us, we'll do what we can. We think we've done that to this point. We've done all we can as volunteers. We've spent our time, we've spent our gas. We don't know where it ends. We have plans in hand. We're being told we need plans. Help us out. That's all we're asking. We're not here to badger you.
Okay? So I think just to have some clarity, obviously, we have just decided to rent, uh, the number of budgets that are together. So clearly, there is no breakdown of subcontractors and whatnot. So. Question is, is it enough if we in each industry put together budget numbers for what is it gonna cost? And present that? Is that gonna be enough for you guys to get behind to present that to taxpayers or?
I think so. I, I think so, because at the end of the day, again, with some, uh. My view, this is a personal view as a finance guy. Um, and I think we can do it. I still think, by the way, money does count. None of you guys do anything without getting paid like me. So. The two million dollars, I think, will end up in a bond situation. And I've talked to Chuck about this. So the more information we have. The best we can come out with. What's that red herring gonna look like when we also present the financing methodology? Because. Present, presentation at the end is, okay, we like it. How are we gonna pay for it?
So we can, we can get. Concrete excavation.
Right.
Plumbing, electrical, those are pretty high number. There's some unknowns. There would be more on, not, I don't say on Phil, but in his category.
Right.
Permitting. They're gonna be.
Permitting waters.
But I think, but I think.
Wastewater.
To, to both them saying that, but like. When Phil's saying, uh, fire safety, all, all this other stuff. It's in another commercial worlds, in another world that most of us aren't in, like that big type of stuff. So. You really, to get some more of a concrete number, you need to be. In contact with somebody, that's all they do. Is they put these buildings up, they do all plumbing, all the heating. I can tell you what I've seen, what I know, what some costs are possibly, but not on that big scale. When you, you jump to that bigger stuff, it's a totally different ballgame. Fire alarms, all that stuff. All that stuff's gonna be able to be integrated down the line. You know, you're gonna be up to date, obviously, there, and then with a new building, if, if something's wrong and you change it, it's not as difficult as it is in that old building. You don't do, you have a wide open space. I, I think we need to get somebody that that's what they do for the true number, not just us, because our number's gonna be off. We need to get, if you want real concrete numbers, take, and like Bucky said, maybe twenty percent more next year, twenty-five percent more. We're gonna. And Paul said what before, shoot high. If you come in a little lower, those are gonna be bad, because we didn't spend that much money. You know, but if we know this number, I mean, eventually, we have to, we, we have to do it as a community. There's like, there's gonna be no if and whats about it. It's gonna have to be done.
Right.
So why not do it now? Like you just said, though, the state says, this is gonna cost you now. Here it's gonna cost you more and more and more. Instead, we put some more money back in our pocket in the future instead of.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, but as Bucky just said, you know, right now, we're looking at higher.
Right.
Extended costs.
We don't, we do not need a general contractor. Can put together a budget number, it's been a count for some of the unknowns. But is that enough to come back? Is that what you want at the next meeting or whatever?
Yeah.
Present, not a present, so we're not doing a presentation. We're gonna give you budget numbers, and then are you talking about a presentation?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Right.
You'd be preparing us for the budget.
Yeah.
That's the best way I can.
And I, I wanna give to you, I wanna give to you guys, yes, I wanna give to you guys, I've, we've got a clear precedent right here. It took them years to get that. Uh, beautiful, uh, fire department approved. The argument was over money. Money was the argument. So money matters. And what I'm saying is to help. We gotta have our money ducks in a row, because we're looking at a bond.
Yeah.
And when they came up with the bond, they got taxpayers behind it. I mean, we, it, it worked. It worked, and they got a beautiful building. So that's a huge part of the, of the sell process. Forgive me if you use that word, but that's really what we're talking about here, or to get everyone to get on board. And we, yeah, we have to present that.
So we come up with some sort of decent budget numbers, and then we get help with the presentation.
Absolutely. That's my view. Chris, go ahead.
I would also suggest that you. Do what Jim did at the very beginning. Give these guys a whole litany of the problems. That are there and existing and what it's costing. So that you, you not only have a presentation of what could be new. What our problems are now.
Yeah, what it costs to fix.
And then, you know, and then how things are gonna, yeah, so I mean, I, I'm just saying, from what I looked up. I think the best presentation you can present is very important, because gas just doubled in price. All this stuff's doubling in prices, and taxpayers are gonna be going, this better be a good presentation.
I agree.
So that's just my only, I wasn't even gonna speak to this. I was just supposed to be at the cemetery, so.
No, we, we, we need.
Phil, damn it, Phil.
We need to know. We don't know. We're just trying to head in the right direction, and I don't, and nobody needs to get, we're not getting mad at each other, like you have some information, and. Some stuff is hard to try to get to, to find, and to get people to actually, like, come together and, and get that correct information is sometimes hard. And we just, we just want a direction. Now, it sounds like we have a direction. Like Bucky said, we come up with some heart.
I think that's.
We come up with some numbers, maybe add some percentage to it, just be a little, little fluff in there, just in case. And then bring that stuff to you guys, and then we can bring the plans along with them, say, this is what we'd like to build, and then you guys.
Chris is right, though. Deficiencies are just as key as what.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Is what we, if not more, probably.
We all named them. I mean, there's all kinds of deficiencies.
Chuck. I will volunteer if you will watch me through, and I will make a slideshow of the ground damage.
Perfect. Yeah, that's, that's what we need.
That is the kind of thing.
And the value of our inventory that needs to be properly shielded, that's not out in the rain and.
The new equipment that doesn't fit inside.
That's right.
You've got one good thing going for you too, and that is, I've been to Graffin many a times. You're gonna build that exact building that we can even ask, ask to have a meeting out there to show the people, because it's like, it's almost like, hey, this is what you're walking through.
I'll go out and take pictures and have, go over to Walgreens and have them develop, and make enough for.
It's a nice place. It is nice, so.
Jim, did you want, did you wanna speak to anything? Electrical wise there? I mean, we've kinda beat it for a while, but.
I don't really know what I said.
Boy, just talk about the electrical.
Nothing about the place that brought us.
They, they said there was no good electrician in town. I would agree. I, I walked through it a bunch of times, looked at all these guys, and, uh. What's there? Needs to be redone. I mean, it, uh. It, it's not adequate for what they have now. Without looking into the future of what is possibly coming down the road with, uh. Who knows, with electric vehicles, charging stations, that type of stuff. It's not even. What's there is even, if it was fixed and was brand new condition, wouldn't be, meet the needs of, of what's coming down the road. But what's there, if an inspector walked in and. Brought everything to code. You're gonna spend. A lot of money. To get it. To code now. And not be what you need it to be. Yes? Just to get the code.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
You, you, you've seen, I don't know your numbers of the stuff that you put into it. But you're getting to the point where, I mean, you can't run a welder, the, the lights are, are going. It's just. Uh, even the stuff that works is, is so old, that it's not gonna meet. Anything close to, to. You can't, you can't fix it and bring it to code. You gotta redo it. If you keep fixing it the way you are now. If, I, I could make stuff work. You're gonna spend. Tens of thousands of dollars. And have a system. That probably. Would be picked apart nonstop by an inspector. Be, I don't know, it would be like throwing a new transmission in the car with three hundred thousand miles on it. And, and, and. You're gonna put more into it than it would cost to replace.
Cost analysis, in your opinion, favors a new building, without question.
Definitely a complete, a complete rewire.
Yeah. Okay.
The, the, the building and, and the structure, I don't know a lot about, but the wiring, it's, it's gotta be done over. And if you're gonna do it over, the, the difference between doing it to what you're gonna need in the upcoming near future. So replacing what's there isn't huge. You know, you're talking. Ten, fifteen percent more to do it to what you need it to be. Long term versus replacing what's inadequate already.
Thank you.
All right.
I have one final concern, just, and this is a bit of ignorance on my point. But we have people in this room right now that they can do it, because they do it daily. It's a little, I, I'm trying to understand how we put a presentation on for anybody. In the day and age right now, or hour, where product prices fluctuate, availability should be, you know, or scarce, or sporadic. And we're supposed to put a watermark on the wall, offering to you. I don't quite understand how we do.
I don't think anybody said anything to the dollar. We know it's not gonna be accurate the next day, but you gotta have.
If Jim thought that electrical was a hundred grand, he had twenty percent of that. You know? That's really what we're gonna do. At today's price, just what you think.
And if we're gonna bid out the bond process, we're gonna need, like they did, some leeway. So while Chuck may have started at two million. I forget what they ended up at. We might end up at, I'm, and I'm just, I'm just saying it, we might end up at two and a half. Because of what you just said, which is an excellent point, but that's why I think we're gonna end up in a bond situation. Anybody, that's just me. But getting all that information out there is certainly gonna help, and then as we go, we can figure out what, if cost alleviator, if they don't, whether or not, you know. None of us have a crystal ball. If we try to use it, we'll eat glass every time, so we don't know. But we will go, at least with the bond process, you're gonna keep. A good deal of, uh. Elasticity if we have to come up higher, which at this point, I think we're all in agreement that that's probably likely. It's gonna be higher, because as you said, we don't know where the health costs are. They're going, bouncing around like a ball.
I don't think they're going down too much.
No, and at the moment. Listen, the state can't even do it. We, we, we worked on that bridge out there. They've been telling us it was two point one, two point two million. They go to bid and it comes out at three point six. That's not even twenty percent. That's like way off. So that every one of the state bids, the state can't even do it. How do they expect the town of Westminster to do that? All we can do is best we can do.
Well, yeah, but this gets us, if some numbers get us started, that's the key. That's what we want. That's all we want, so that somebody, we can start pursuing it. And moving forward, whether it takes another year or two, like.
So for now, highway garage discussion, we'll table that for now. Until. You come up with somebody who just let me know, and we'll put it back on the agenda when you have a. Proposal or whatever, however you wanna word it. And then there's no time constraint. If it takes you more than two weeks or a month, then that's what it takes, but it'll be tabled for now.
Yeah, I, I, I'll, I'll have, take kind of lead. If Molly's willing to do the slide thing. I can talk to these guys on the phone at different times and put some numbers together, and work with Molly, and we can put a presentation. Together, something to give you guys.
Thank you. As a footnote, or a final note, maybe, Mr. Chair, on the African committee side. Get some of those monies that all are gonna go towards this project, which they could, usually. There's a window there. So, you know, we, we kick the can down the road too far, you might miss an opportunity.
Yeah. I'll, I'll keep it on the radar as tabled, and you can kick it as far as you want, if you want it to be.
Once I.
If you're ready in two weeks, we'll put it back on.
Once I get something to get, once I get something together, talk to all of them, and talk to Molly, and I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
But we do appreciate it.
Don't tell you when.
We won't tell you when you talk. All right.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. Let's move on to, uh, B, annual review discussion. I'm not even sure what that is.
That's, uh, the review of the accounts, considering time, time over flow. Mr. Chair, may I make a recommendation that we table that, uh, because we were focused on.
Okay.
Oh, uh, Ally, have you? I have my copy. Does everyone have their copy?
I have my copy.
Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Ally.
I have, I have another copy that I'll make it up to me.
I did, I didn't get it.
Nope, I sent an email out.
It was sent out.
I sent an email out, and I can gladly get you a copy for the next meeting.
Thank you for doing that.
If, if, I gotta use that in the email.
I sent you the email.
Okay. So we'll. Table that till next meeting as well. Uh, C, town managers report.
I'm gonna be real quick.
No problem.
Um, I have a meeting. Um, via Zoom with Jim Matt House, six fourteen at three P M. For the village power money. Uh, that should go fairly quick. They didn't earmark anybody yet. We will have that done. We have a meeting. Chuck, I don't know if Ben's gonna be there. I'll be there for the. One twenty-one bridge on Friday. I believe that's at nine o'clock, nine to ten. I think that was the latest email. Tract, trash tags are being processed, uh, are on track for being mailed. Before the end of June, we're doing it in-house. Kelly and I are working, we plug that away a little bit of time. Kelly's on vacation and starting tomorrow. Won't be back until Tuesday. And then, when the regional center sent a. Information I'm gonna give to Paul, because I emailed all you folks with it. It's about trying to pay attention to your armpit funds in case Paul gets it. Culprits. Or culvations, just to.
Save some money as a.
Put some aside. I wanted to give you a hard copy, Paul. I'm not sure, I think I have your. Text and stuff. I don't know. I don't think so, but, um, I thought you should have that. Does anyone have any questions for me? Everyone going all right for this side of what I'm doing?
Phone calls, they could be great.
Just reach out. Don't slap me in a meeting, please.
No, definitely.
Why are you looking at me?
Do you, do you mind at meetings doing a manager's report, or only if needed? Or how do you wanna do that?
I don't care. It's a, I think you should know that I'm doing something in there.
Yeah. Well, we haven't had one for a while, so.
But I don't wanna, but I don't wanna inundate. I mean, this is, this is a huge discussion. And, um. People, people work all day. And, you know, I get it. So I don't wanna, you're, you're all working all day.
We try, you know.
And sometimes, you know. What did you wanna talk to me about?
I wanted to ask about the hazard mitigation.
Oh, I sent an email. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. You talk about it. Cause I sent an email to these folks, but.
Okay. Yeah, we just, as the, uh. Ally got an email from the regional commission that the. Towns Hazard Mitigation, the local hazard mitigation plan, I think it's called, is in draft form. They need comments back by the sixteenth of June. And the village and the town both need to approve that.
Yeah.
Um, so what she's, what they're looking for now is any revisions needed. So my only question to Ally earlier was. Is there gonna be a meeting on that, or are people just gonna chime in, or how are you, how are we gonna do it?
I, that's why I sent each one of you that email. It was multiple pages. I sent it, I think it was a repeat to Chuck. For his input too, on the email, but that's up to you folks. Wanna get together? Talk about it, or you just wanna sign off on it? Chuck knows more about forwards and all that stuff than I.
So I just, I helped write it, the draft.
Right.
So I read it, and I, I was sent from Mark, uh. Mark O'Geehan, they sent me a copy of it. I read it, went through it, had some revisions. Uh, nothing serious. There's some misculings, a couple of typos, uh. She had, Russ Down is still being the emergency management coordinator, which is, is no longer. It's Ben. So I changed that, but that's all I found in there that wasn't.
So, if you think.
So I emailed her back. I think you're, I might have missed something, but that's all I found. Uh, I had Ben read it also, and, uh, he found the same thing I did, and didn't find anything else that sealed out a crack. So I felt comfortable with that, and I emailed her back and told her, that's all I had. I assumed everybody else was gonna read it.
I would.
Send their opinion to that, send one of the other.
It's like, we adopt this.
Seven, all the pages.
Yeah, it's a lot of it. Yeah, yeah.
So if I look at it, if I have any suggestions from the early draft, I will look that up. Send it to you.
Perfect.
Thank you. Uh, anything else?
Uh, trash tags meeting.
Good. All right, we're gonna move on to E, which we added, uh, line of credit closure. Uh. We're gonna, so we're gonna pay that off. And. I know when Russ was here before, we had talked about keeping the line available. As it's open, but not anything on it.
Gosh, nothing to do that.
You're right, it does cost nothing to do that, and that was my opinion as well, until. The more I thought about it, is we're all signed on that. We're all signers on that. Line. I'm not super comfortable. With my name being still attached to a loan, even though there's nothing on it. If we were to have a problem in the future, I would think we could just go get another one. I would like to, I would like to close that.
Um, Mr. Chair, I have a pro call real here. I can be quick. I brought it with me tonight for the record and to submit all the documents to make sure we're unequivocally clear that we follow the process meticulously. Storm occurred on June, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank everyone here, everyone in the community. For all the incredible work they did, as evidenced in the Gazette article we did in August. Uh, telling everyone, thank you for that. Uh, while we're on it, though, I noticed we, there's an issue that none of the fire. People, because they're all volunteer, could be compensated for their time. I don't know if there's a solution, Mr. Chair, in the future, but that's something we should consider. people, because they're all volunteer, could be compensated for their time. I don't know if there's a solution, Mr. Chair, in the future, but that's something we should consider. Uh, since they were frozen out, I believe I'm correct in using that terminology from, um, being reimbursed for their time from FEMA monies. If I'm incorrect, someone can correct me. Okay, gonna very be quick. July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, the day after that morning, all of us were present, Toby Young, Jason Perry. We called a special meeting, V L C T, where it's gonna be retrans and declared Wyndham County a emergency meeting. Based on that information, we invoked section three oh six. We authorized the town manager to go ahead and spend money from the budget to immediately effectuate repairs. Uh, Chuck Lawrence was key in his leadership here as well. And the key here was to preserve life and property and safety. That's our first protocol and to get the, um, roads open and safe, which they did. This is number one. Uh, the minutes for that meeting submitted to the record. Forty, oh, we instructed the town manager to make sure that he was keeping very clean, concise and coherent, um, and Chuck, uh, lists of what was being done. Four days later, August second, we convened. Toby Young was not present, four members of the board. Um, approval for five hundred thousand dollars when they asked how much money was specifically allocated. How much money does the town have to place towards the incident right now was asked. And we were told the board, and the board was told two hundred thousand. Uh, are we gonna be reimbursed for all the work thus far at that point? And was it done appropriately? Both the R F and the T M said yes. Now that's at that point. We then authorized the bids to go out to find the financing to make sure we had it because all of our contractors were pressed elsewhere. And of course, uh, uh, materials were difficult to find. So that's why we moved with dispatch and we actually took the extraordinary step of looking to get a loan. Um, that's number two in the record, Mr. Chair. Number three, line of credits were, were sought from Mascoma, Savings Bank of Waco, Waco and Community Bank. Here it is. This is number three in the record following the protocol. We then went to V L C T, got an actual member from Garrett Baxter, who's a senior staff attorney advising us the following, that we could choose three methods, three methods of following up to get the five hundred thousand dollars needed to make sure our contractors were paid in a timely fashion to keep them on. Under V S A seventeen eighty-six, we may borrow money taxes so long as a term of one year or less and the amount borrowed does not exceed ninety percent of the municipal taxes assessed for that year. This is it in writing. We followed the protocol. We went and we got the loan. Prior to getting a loan, that's number four submitted. Number five, this went to and came from Katie Sodiker, the FEMA representative. This is the listing of all the repairs to precipitate the loan. They're presented from FEMA and we went for the loan. Leonard Slayson, number six, the list of the credit line approved from Mascoma Bank, which provided us with a one percent, went to the town attorney, he approved it. Uh, then we went, number seven, August eleventh. So this is the run. It's a twelve-month term loan. That's what it is right here. Twelve months at one percent. That's a great rate. It is not an open loan. It is due on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, two thousand twenty-two, which is coming up. That's when it's due. It's a one-year note. How do we know this too? Mascoma letter of credit, which was issued by uh, Arlene Adams and signed by our town manager. Here is the note itself, which is number eight. That submitted as number seven to the record. Number eight is the promissory note, five hundred thousand dollars interest rate one, due thirteenth of this year. Inside that, we may prepay the loan because our FEMA money is in. At the time, we had no idea how much money people would get us and what is true that FEMA may or may not reimburse us. Reality is, the only reason we have any FEMA money is because we had a storm. That's the only reason the money came to us. That's the only reason we got a loan. So the first priority is to pay off the loan because it's due on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Now, we can pay it before then because the money from FEMA is in. The prepayment with respect, Mr. Chair, should be discussed by the town manager and/or you with the banker as to what's the calculation of interest, which is there on this particular page. Uh, but it's submitted to the record and to your concern, which I, I share with you. Um, uh, also with that is, uh, Mr. Slayson's, um, his, uh, opinion that we are not liable, but we did sign it. Uh, all members of the board did sign it. Uh, I thought it was important. I wasn't sure on how this worked, but the town needed the money. Uh, we were in a tough spot and I'm glad I was able and other members of board were selfless enough to do that. Uh, but again, we are liable for the loan technically and that loan should be closed out. Uh, but I was glad to sign as were members of this board. Number eight into the record, almost there. Number nine, um, this is the actual letter from the attorney specifically stating, I am not aware of any basis which you would be held liable for the bank providing information, Larry. This goes into the nature of the loan, how it works, because there is a statute in which we can be held liable as a board if the loan's not paid off. And the loan is to be paid off on the thirteenth of August. I submit this is number nine. Lastly, number ten, authorization to release the loan signed by Paul Allen and Kevin Hughes, eight twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one. We utilized two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which according to Kelly Thayer, this is number sixteen, which is in your packet. That remains, Mr. Chair, at two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars today. I'm submitting that as number eleven to be paid off. And lastly, number twelve was the Gazette article where we notified everyone, thanking them in advance uh, for all their help. That's everyone in this room. That's, uh, the fire department. That's Chuck and Highway guys who did an amazing job down hall, everybody. And promised them that we would keep copious notes and keep everyone in the loop as to what we were doing. We took an emergency action and we followed the rules. The loan needs to be paid off. And I submit these all to the record for the clerk. And that's all I have to say. That was six minutes and forty-one seconds, sir. Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we go authorize. Are you gonna want that massed on?
Town manager.
I can.
Was it make a motion that we authorize the town manager go ahead and pay off the loan, the mass phone the bank?
I second that.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Uh, any discussion?
With FEMA reimbursement, with FEMA reimbursement.
I assume so. With money from FEMA that's deposited.
Right. No, I'm just wondering if that should be in your margin. Cause that is what you just said.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
If the money gets deposited in the account, I don't know if you want to know that. Yeah.
I'll write it the correct way.
Re, restate your
Motion correct.
Out with FEMA.
Yeah. With the, with the what's the terminology you want? We wanna use FEMA money to pay it off. So we go back to authorize the town manager to pay off with the FEMA money, the line of credit that we have with the loan with them.
And close the loan because there are members who have signed on that loan who are no longer members of this board. So that line of credit needs to be closed.
So she would come back with a paid off note, like any other note showing this paid off and we're no longer liable.
They'll sign that. I'm sure I. Uh, so we have a motion to pay the note off using FEMA funds and close the loan.
Second.
We have a second. We have a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? As have.
Thank you. Hope I wasn't too loud.
Good job, guys.
I didn't realize I skipped executive session. I don't think we have a need for that. Uh, any, anything else on that? Uh, boards, committees and commissions. Alright, seeing none. Other business? Does anybody have any other business at this time? Alright, so Jim first. I'll get back to you, Paul.
Yeah. The recycling program that the state or an actual town, right?
Recycling program.
Yeah.
Meaning curbside?
Uh, yeah.
I believe that's the, that's town. Mandated by the state, but we haven't provided at curbside by, by.
So then you have to oversee up then.
Right. We have a, we're the ones who are responsible for the contract. Is that what you're asking?
No, well, possibly. What it is, since I get down here every, every week, if you guys, it's been a while, but I'm, I'm on my third recycling barrel because the recyclers seem to love to take my barrel and read it so bad that I just have to donate it till the following week if it's possible. So it's starting to cost money. That's ridiculous. And the previous administration would just give me a certain individual's phone number and ask me to deal directly with it. And I refuse because I have a good rapport with that person when I'm wearing a different badge that I shouldn't be dealing with this. This is a town event. He should be dealing with it. So I'd really like you guys to take and authorize Ms. Allison over there to get her whip out of the drawer and start laying some, laying some whipping down because these guys need a wake-up call. That it's costing people money to sit there and beat the crap out of their barrel to get the recyclables out. I try to cut stuff up into what I consider reasonable size, that it goes in the barrel. Then it's reasonable for them to ask it to come out of the barrel. Not only do they not put it far enough back in the driveway, I've had Bezen Brothers trucks run one of them over. It's so flat, I could serve it as pizza. And I brought pictures down and showed the other administrator about that and I was just blown off that you need to take it up with the recycler. No, this is not my program. This is a town program. Town people need to deal with this. So I'm at the irritation level on. So that's why I'm bringing it up because a little more foresight and oversight of this program means that, because I'm getting sick of buying barrels.
Yeah. Uh, you wanna contact Joe tomorrow or Friday or I can? Doesn't matter.
I don't mind. I just need
I have them in my phone.
I know, I know who to contact. I just need to, um, need your full name and address.
Oh, that's not a problem. It's not a problem.
You wanna, you wanna give it to me now? Do you wanna call?
Yeah, Jim Conroy, it's twenty-three forty-six, backless minister. And Joe and I have spoken on different occasions and I've kinda got a little runaround from him. So that's why I'm thinking it's needs, needs to come from the town. It's, cause I don't wanna, I, I need a dumpster and I call Joe.
Yep.
But I don't need this to be a goal between.
Right.
Cause it's not my program.
Yep.
So
We'll see.
Something, something needs to change. So when I saw the contract for the next three years, I kept wishing it's gonna stay cause I'll on it. I've had enough of materials in the ones it hires.
Okay. Alright. We appreciate it. We'll get a, we'll get a uh, Paul, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Alright.
Come back to me in a minute. Oh, I'm, no, I'm sorry. It came to me. Thank you. My personal opinion to the board, with all due respect for your decision, I'd like you to reconsider your decision not filling this position on this board. I am joined by others. I'm not going to try and identify them more than I but there has been conversations within the town about it. Um, I've decided to bring it to you as my personal opinion. I should sell it. I believe it's a five-member board. There should be five seats filled. We have ten more months of this season. So the glory of the year is up. I don't think it's the right decision to make. With all due respect.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, Chris?
I was, I'm kinda thinking the same with Paul. Um, I was looking at the filling very, uh, vacancies here. And, um, I'll let you guys look it up, but kinda seems to me like that the position should be filled. And the fact that you had a few people that were interested, um, that's usually a pretty uncommon occurrence that people offer to do it. That's just my thought too. I just thought it probably would be helpful. I'm fifth member. Make a little bit of pressure off you guys also. If you have a two-two vote, I just wasn't sure exactly how you take care of that. John?
That's a good question.
What was, what was the reason for you guys not getting another person to fill? The people, if people volunteered, what was the reason for you guys not getting somebody in there? Or what's your?
Uh, appointment versus letting the people decide who they want there?
I'm not sure. So kinda
Well, this is, this is just, oh, okay, okay.
If I could just speak to that and to what was just said. You put out what you, you asked for people to put a letter of interest in. It's kinda confusing. You asked for that. People did that.
We asked because we were required to.
Then you didn't act on it, so not to.
And we're not required to act on it either.
Well, that's fine. It doesn't, I'm just trying to let you know that
Yeah.
We there you should go.
And it is under twenty-four V S A nine sixty-one. Uh, it is just the select board making a temporary appointment. So come March, it would be, it's just true that.
Oh, totally true. Yep. Alright. Any other, other business at this time? Uh, seeing none. Uh, we had talked before about keeping a meeting or not doing a second meeting possibly through the summer. I think, I think right now we need to keep this, this second.
This one and then after that, we could do one in July, one in August.
Yeah, cause we're gonna have some other, some fuel tank stuff for next meeting too.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll keep date, next meeting, June twenty-second.
And that will be, we will have something to show that the end of the year, we're all set.
I'm working on that right now.
Okay.
Cause that would be the last meeting where
It's on.
Where it's the end of the year.
Yep. Okay. You good?
Thanks, Ally.
I would, uh, kick a motion to adjourn.
Motion so moved.
I'll second it. Uh, move and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As have. Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Recording stopped.
Really, at least it's working. You did too. Thank you.
Yep.
So they're all yours today. Now for the record. I guess you can give a caveat. Uh, the legal stuff.
I've got, I've got a meeting with the state.
I don't know.
So what we don't expect?
I just wanted to know there were two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
We followed that one. We followed that.
Not, not
Not, not. We're in the first.